Alright guys, so we're gonna do something a little bit different today. I'm here with the one and only Mr. Texas Tomo to talk about spinning goes and potentially become better at them in the process. The idea of this, guys, was basically I wanted Texas Tomo to help me out, to kind of be my accountability buddy and make sure that while we're doing the challenge, we're not just blasting volume, we're actually taking an opportunity to try and improve and then also kind of reflecting on many, many years of being stuck in what is probably a profitable pattern of behavior, but then also kind of having bad habits in the process and overlooking stuff in the process as well. So before we get into this, Texas Tomo, I hope that we're gonna be doing a few of these in the future. So why don't you start by introducing yourself a little bit so that people know who you are?
Yeah, thank you, Nick. Hello, Nick. Hello, guys. My name's Texas Tomo. I've been a spinning go coach now for, I would say, nine, eight years or so, playing spins since I came out, so like 11 years ago. Worked for Team Six for One, quite a big spin, spinning goes, second school, do a lot of coaching there. And so have hopefully some useful things to look at, to share with Nick, that we can have a look. I think it'd be very interesting, Nick, especially if you haven't had, let's say, that kind of outside observer in terms of your game for a while. That can sometimes be helpful just to sort of jolt things where you're like, oh yeah, I didn't, I didn't think of that, right? And just get a fresh perspective. So fingers crossed we can find something. I think there's a couple of things with the new format we can maybe have a look at as well, but we'll see how we get on.
Yeah, absolutely. And guys, in particular, I feel like this is very, a very good time to look into this kind of stuff because as Tom just mentioned, we have seen the merge of spinning go flash and regular speed spins. And even though, I was saying to you, Tom, even though this is like something that like, I feel like I've played a thousand times over, like there are, it's like a higher frequency of awkward stack depths that I found awkward, but I didn't have to look at them too much because they didn't happen as often as they would have done in regular speeds. So this is a good opportunity to kind of reflect, as you said, and I'm excited about that. So we spoke before we did this session and we kind of said, a good place to start often is just taking a look at frequencies, taking a look at some, at some information, some data that we have saved. So of course, I've been tracking my progress for spinning goes for a long time and we're gonna take a look at my database a little bit. And that should give some indication as to the weak points and that's something I'm not particularly good at. So we've got Texas Tomo here to help us with that. And yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you sort of lead the way, Tom. Let's get across to, to a different screen quick.
Perfect.
Alright, so I just have this open right now, but like, this, this is just a random three-way GTO button situation. But where would you like to kick things off?
So I mean, I mean, I think let's firstly, we'll kind of go through each position and just have a look at the, like sort of bit by bit. Often it's, do you know the scene in The Matrix where the guy's just reading the code? And then he kind of paints a picture? I feel like I've looked at so many databases and so many frequencies by now that like, I kind of just get a good idea of an overview just by looking at all the different numbers and sort of a few key things. And so if you're happy, Nick, we can sort of jump to like, just go through them sort of step by step and let's take a look at typically like, if we start with a button, which is obviously, obviously great, we'd be looking at things like the, the C bet is an important frequency here, the, the turn barrel as well. I would say the, just from the kind of broad overview, we'd say your V pip looks okay. We can have a sort of more in-depth look at certain, certain stack depths, right? Min raising at certain shallow stacks as well would be quite important against population. C bet and barrel turn would be things, but let's kind of go through bit by bit because I don't want to dive too much into something. If this is probably a strength of yours and I remember last time we looked today, it was like very, very brief look we had, Nix. And we're already kind of, yeah, narrowing in on something. So I want to see if that's still the pattern that we see in the new spins. So yeah, let's, let's just kind of go maybe small blind versus big blind in the three max or the GTO is fine as well.
Small blind versus big blind, there you go.
So typically here, we just look for your, your V pip is the fundamental thing. Small blind, big, big blind is a very difficult one to analyze from a database perspective because there are so many viable pre-flop strategies and post-lap strategies you can take that. If you were to, for example, run a raise-only strategy or a limp-only strategy or a mixed strategy or different sizes, it's going to create lots of very divergent post-lap frequencies, right? But the overall strategies can actually be, from a, from a theory point of view, can be incredibly similar in terms of EV. So you can have wildly looking stats in a blind v blind spot in terms of the post-lap stuff and still have, let's say, similar win rates. But the fundamental thing that seems to tie a lot of blind v blind work together is make sure your V pip enough, especially against weaker opponents. And there were a few coaches back in the day I worked with and some, one guy who was a very, probably the most successful blind v blinds player ever, played reg speeds back in the day, R and P reg speeds. And he just advocated for 100 V pip. He was like, I just 100% V pip against recreationals until they give me a reason not to. And he had the best win rate I've ever seen in a blind v blind spot over big samples. And so I think it's a really important point that we see very, very strong correlation between increasing V pip and higher win rates. And so that would be something we'd probably have a look at here. And let's kind of keep rolling through them because that could also then overlap. So we'll go to, what's our next one?
Small blind versus button.
Yeah, we'll have a look at this one. This one's the least important, I'd say, in terms of the post-lap, right? It's just gonna be a question of like, normally we look at things like three betting, making sure they're wide enough. Three betting is a little bit challenging as well as you get shallower. So like 11 to 13 would be an interesting point where this is where we could have a little chat about the differences between what you see in theory versus what you see from the population. And so if you think about the GTO's button opening min raise strategy at 11 BB, for example, it has quite a lot of bluffs in that line and also has quite a lot of the sort of merged value, right? You see lots of sort of A7 suited min raise, for example, like at some small frequency. Now, a lot of guys don't min raise and they just open jam, right? And a lot of the population does, especially regs. And so if you were to run some pre-flop node locks and give population tendencies, that's sort of the facing a button min raise at sort of 11 BB. Often what you'll see is as a default, unless you have, you know, reads that will suggest this player is playing counter to the population, you should be incredibly tight with some three bets that you're taking. And like, what are auto three bets can actually be costing you quite a bit of money against population. So that's a little example. Other than that, small ones button, we wouldn't really overly worry about. Any questions so far, by the way, Nick? I realize I'm...
No, 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 this is, no, this is fantastic. This is what we're here for. But I was, I was just gonna add there as well, I think another really common one that I know is just like so wildly different from GTO is small blind versus big blind in circumstances where, where people start limping at like eight big blinds effective or like seven big blinds effective, right? Because even really inexperienced players are so prone to push fold if they feel uncomfortable, the limp suddenly skews towards like extreme strength in so many situations. So then identifying regs is important because regs will have strategies that include limbs at those stack depths. Whether or not it's an exploit is probably another conversation because a lot of it isn't meant to be limped. Like if we look at the frequency of limp at A big blinds effective, blind v blind, it's already extremely low in the first place, right? Theoretically, but as an exploit can be super, super powerful, especially if they know that they're playing at people against, against people who are playing lots of tables and they're just defaulting to just push like any king, any ace, whatever versus limp there.
Hundred percent.
Let's continue. Okay, it's cool. So big blind versus small blinds?
Yeah, and so here, this would be one where we typically, there's some of the sort of, let's say, fundamental frequencies we'd look at would be things like iso swings, very important here in terms of how much you're iso-ing. We see a decent amount of iso, which is good. As you get shallow, obviously the iso non-lin. And it's actually, this is very nicely segues into the point you were just talking about, which is when people are often limping at the shallow stacks, sort of 8BB, 9BB, and you correctly identified like, often they're jamming a lot of their uncomfortable hands. And often that can lead to a very polarized range, right? So they have like the limp at the very top of the range, but they also, if they are limping wide enough, they're limping a lot at the bottom of the range too. And actually, a really effective strategy against that would be to take lots of small isos and actually not have tons of iso jams because when you iso jam, you fold out the air that was gonna fold anyway. But actually shift your strategy a little bit to be more iso non-lin heavy rather than iso shove heavy, those sort of stack depths. And just have a min isos, for example. We can see from your numbers, just as this is like, if we look at your 7 to 9, you can see your iso non-lin is 3.1 and it looks like sort of at the 15 and below, we have a slightly below GTO frequencies in terms of the iso non-lin numbers and the iso jams are pushing a bit higher. So that could be something that like, would be an easy win to pick up on, right? Is to take some of those iso bluffs you're taking, maybe? And just if it's against the specific opponent type or even just population, to actually just go for the sort of min iso. Like the, the way that you would get exploited there would be people, if you had a massive frequency of non-lin iso-ing at 8BB blinds, people would have to start adding either bluff limp jams, which how many times have you seen a bluff limp jam from a reg at 8BB?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of like the point we were just making, right? It's just, it's so much easier for regs, even regs who are looking to really like push their edge and just find like lots of small edges. It's so much easier just to default to playing a push-fold strategy at that stack depth because it's very hard to outperform it and it adds complexity when you could be playing more.
Exactly, exactly. And so a lot of these things are not, let's say, when we look at population data, it's often easier, I think, for it to be framed as like, oh, it's very critical about population. Especially, you know, if anything, I would probably encourage population to do what the population is doing in a lot of spots where if you're playing, especially if you're playing lots of tables, right? It's like simplifying your life does mean you can add more volume without, let's say, having the quality drop off so much. But it does open up these avenues to exploit. And I think especially for someone like Nick who's got, you've got such a good poker brain already, Nick. And the nice thing is, is a lot of your volume is obviously on, with a lower table count, which I think gives you more access, if you like, to kind of think through these spots compared to, there's a, there's sort of like an information processing edge that you have where someone that's like just eight tabling, playing a kind of Nash push-fold strategy, you have an edge available there for you to kind of be able to capitalize on more.
Sure, no, absolutely. And actually, I think that's a really important point to make as well because I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but it, it does often feel like, you know, spinning go players kind of fall into different categories, right? You've got like the guys that are really, really interested in becoming better at poker and they're really heavily focused on, on sort of maximizing their edge and they're trying to actually win as many chips as possible. And then you have other guys who of course are trying to accomplish the same thing, but they tend to just be playing volume because they know that they can get through their bonuses faster, they can get to a higher tier faster. And you know, as we've, as I'm gonna discuss in, in other videos, guys, the, you know, the bonus structure is so important to spinning goes where a lot of people, a lot of people don't realize that, right? If they're, if you're gonna play a lot of high-volume hyper sort of games, whether that's heads-up hypers or if that's spinning goes, for example, the rakeback that you receive is such a huge part of your edge and it's also linear because you get it every single game you play as opposed to, I'm playing towards this EV target that's sort of like, you know, it should be this, but who knows what it's gonna be? Because that's actually gonna be subject to variance as it changes. So having, you know, having a solid volume means that we do get to these sort of rakeback tiers faster, which means the bonuses will help us to be profitable much faster than if we were just playing purely, purely for dollars without any extra help. But yeah, please continue, Tom. Should we, do you want to stay on this one? Should we move?
No, no, let's go, let's go back to the left here and let's have the BB button, yeah, please.
Okay, and here we go.
And so we can see slightly overfolding 11 to 12, is it under or overfolding? Sorry. The numbers are a little blurry. So 47 or 42?
It's 42, it's 42.
Okay, alright. So one of the things we, we talked about in the, in the smallnesses button is, and I think often one of the, one of the areas I would kind of default, try and direct a reg speed player towards would be like to look at some of the theoretical defending ranges at sort of 12BB or 10BB or something like that. So we can talk about like the population and exploit, et cetera, et cetera. But just in terms of like, even bring it to a fundamental theoretical level, I think it's very easy to defend, for example, any suited cards, right? At 12BB, you're kind of used to, so used to like putting in the defend with any suited combos. And if you look at the theoretical defense versus a button min raise at 10BB, it's quite surprising, I think, to see just how tight we, we go there. We could segue that. If you have some theory or some big blind defend, we can take a quick look at.
Sure.
I don't know, what's, what's allowed? I don't know. Are we allowed to do this, Nick?
So what would you like me to pull up?
Just look at, just a GTO big blind versus button min raise at 11, 10, 11, 12, something like that.
Actually hilariously so. Why don't I just open my own chart pack that, that I created? That's for sale.
Now, is that available, Nick?
It is available, it is available.
And where would I get that from?
Exactly. NickWaltzTV.com. Okay, so let's go ahead and fire up the, let's fire that up. So on the desktop, and let's take a look at, alright, NWTV chart packs, there you go. Let's open up the chart pack here and let's take a look at some big blind defense. So this is big blind versus button min raise and the small one is folded. And we were looking at sort of 11 to 13, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. 10, 11, I mean, maybe start with 10BB is often more dramatic, I think, the, the impact there. So I would say most reg players, reg speed players coming from reg speed background are not very good at folding 8, 7 off. Are not very good at folding a hand like 10, 4 suited, jack 2 suited, 10, 9 off. Like that's, that's kind of mad, right? When you think about that, Nick, that you're like, hang on, I'm in the big blind with 10, 9 off and the button's min raised and I fold. And that's from a theory point of view. Now, what happens when we make the button, when we knock out some of those bluff min raises at 10BB? And not only that, but when we eliminate some of the A7 suited, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe we can quickly, if it's possible, Nick, have a look at the button min raising.
Yeah, exactly. This is, this is always important. This is something I really, really push for my, for my, for my students, if you were, or people that follow me, to look at because so often they just want to find the answer immediately. They want to see the answer, but the answer is predicated on the question, right? And if the, if the button min raise is, is really low at these, at these stacked up. So this is 10 big blinds, this is 10 big blinds button open. You can see queen 7 suited is being min raised, king 5 suited is being, and if they're not doing that, suddenly this becomes so absurdly strong, doesn't it? Yeah.
Yes. And not only, not only that, but also it's important to recognize like, having a button, if you're playing someone who has an A7 suited as part of the min raising range, you are gonna naturally realize more equity with those sort of like 10, 9 off hands, right? Against that kind of range. And so often people are not only dropping the bottom, but then they're missing the kind of merge or mixed hands or something, which are like value min raises, but not quite value min raises, but whatever, they're for balance. And so often, and, and I've yet to see a guy that I've worked with, with their population data, see anywhere close to a GTO min raise fold from their population. Most people are like, if you looked here, you probably have a min raise fold of like, I don't know, 40% or something. Most people are seeing min raise folds of like 18% or something like that. Like it's, it's like 2X the value to bluff ratio, most people are saying in, in terms of the response to the, the three bit shove. Now, obviously, we, we know from a theory point of view, as a, as a starting point, 10 and off is a minus EV defend. Doesn't get better unfortunately when you add the population stats. And so it's, it's really interesting. You can run node locks and that's something we, maybe we, we can do in future, Nick. Is when you build up a big sample, it'd be very interesting to see, you know, because I don't know 100%, but my speculation is at, at those sort of $10 games, a $20, $25 game, stuff like that, it's actually gonna be more pronounced this effect and actually defending even a lot of these, like defending king non-off is probably losing chips, 7, 4 suited, 8, 4 suited against population. Now, of course, we'll add the usual caveats. There are some players that will just be min raising way too wide and then fine. It's a different thing. But yeah, this is often, I think, just an easy habit to fall into that comes from a reg speed background, right? It's like at 25BB, 20BB, 15BB, you're kind of used to defending any suited cards, which you should be doing. It's, it's sort of like, wow, I defend really tight here. And obviously, when you play the new formats, we're gonna be playing 10BB a lot more as part of our volume. So that will be certainly something that I would encourage, yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And actually, so as soon as we kicked off, we got, we got off to a pretty good start. I'm actually, I'm gonna do my first update soon, but we got off to a really good start and I was, I was definitely like redlining. I've, I've never been a massively redline player anyway in the first place as a style, but then I was, seemed to be bombing much harder than usual. And I think the first thing I identified was, right, I'm gonna do some more drills. And I was way over defending here even versus GTO. And it was, and it was just exactly like you said, just feels like 10, 9 off is just like, come on, like, we're not gonna, we gotta peel this. And these are the spots that I think you can identify really quickly when you start to drill. And also the other one I noticed was so much more frequently now, it's a situation where there's two big stacks and one extremely short stack, right? So like sort of 10 big blind, 10 big blind, one big blind or something is so common. And all of a sudden, there's tons of limping on the button that, that previously didn't exist in my game. And the realization that we're effectively playing heads-up against the deeper stacked player and the other player just doesn't matter anymore. And being in the pot is beneficial for, you know, other reasons too. But yeah, I think that this is definitely the, exactly the kind of thing that, that we wanted to, to talk about. So just if we pause here for a moment.
Yep.
How, okay, so personally, I've always advocated for, as you play more poker and you have more experience, one of the things you realize really quickly is you can identify player types a lot faster. You go, okay, I see what he's doing here. Okay, he's the kind of guy that like, will just like min lead any hand, like you know, any sort of draw, any hand, like bottom pair, middle pair. He's the kind of player that only leads when he has a draw. He's the kind of player who overfolds or you know, is not defending enough or whatever. Outside of that, just sort of like, you know, speculating based on just your limited experience in a spinning go, are we just gonna have to look at, look at stats or to, you know, identify whether or not these players are, you know, min raise folding the correct amounts or, you know, is, is there some other method that we can think about in terms of this is the kind of player that will, that will have min raise bluffs on the button?
Yeah, it's a really good question. I, I think we're venturing it. It depends a little bit on whether you want to stay within the realms of, let's say, the scientific kind of quantitative analysis, which would be involved in things like stats, et cetera, et cetera. And whether you want to verge more into the kind of qualitative assessments where one of the things I, I often do when I first sit down is obviously you have a look and at the play and like, what read list, I think is too frequently a word that I see used where someone goes, read this reg? And I go, well, you've played 25 hands. Like, I don't know how they're read list. Like the fact that if they're read list after 25 hands, it's like, okay, they've been, been a reg for 25 hands.
And that's it, that's it.
That's a read in itself. And so thing, if you want to kind of go for the more, let's say, woolly assessments, you can look at things like the countries. You can also do things, I find it really interesting and I have a little, this may not be accurate, but I'm sort of trying to build some sample where I'm using player names a little bit. So I look at things, for example, like I, I take a player's name and I think, what is the typical characteristics of someone that would make this player name? So if someone's got a very messy name, right, uncapitalized, lots of numbers all over the place, I'm like, this player is perhaps more likely to be a bit more carefree with their attitude. Now, if you look at Texas Tomo, I've done a very neat job capitalizing my name and it's no numbers, it's neat, neat.
I'm the same, yeah.
And I'm quite, I would say as a default, a bit tighter, a bit more cautious in my game style. And I had to kind of learn over the years to, to get out of that box. Whereas the guy that's sort of, I don't know, you know, I'm gonna make up something that sounds like aggressive in my head, Gaza0769412, exclamation mark, exclamation mark, exclamation mark, with like a car avatar.
We've all played a Gaza, trip 007 before.
Exactly, exactly. And, and you kind of already get an idea of like, well, this is probably a guy that's perhaps on average more likely to be, have a wider range in certain spots or have more capability of bluffing compared to Texas Tomo, you know what I mean? That's like soup in it. And I think, so there are certain things of that. I would say that's obviously a bit of an aside. If you were to take just in-table stuff you can look for, I would say it's very, one of the things that can be really useful is to just look at any, pay attention to anything that you've seen in the game. So if, for example, you've seen this guy already fold a couple of hands blind v blinds, didn't limp two out of two, it doesn't give us the exact answer, we're still gonna be wrong, but it gives us a much greater weighting, if you like, of where we can place this person. So someone that's already folded two hands out of two in a blind v blind spot, we can say with a bigger confidence interval is someone that isn't going mad in a button min raise spot, for example, with their hand like king 7 off, right? That's just less likely.
Yeah, it's an extension of, of a style, yeah.
Exactly. And as soon as you see something that is the reverse, maybe this guy, for example, is min raised, blind v blind with a jack 2 off or something, well then already I'm like, okay, well this guy's just gonna be min raising super wide on the button, right? And so I think those are all sort of things to look for. And it can be tough because sometimes you don't see a showdown, but things that can be helpful too is like, let's say you even just see a button limp and then it goes check to check and the guy just folds to a turn probe, right? You didn't see a showdown, but what it does tell us is this guy had a limping strategy which was non-premium. Because it's a, it's a blank turn he folds to a min bet, like it was trash. So therefore we can already segregate that like, there's a, there's a part of his strategy which is limping air and therefore it's actually probably strengthened his min raising range too. So these are little soft skills and it's not a exact science, but it's about the more kind of iterations you can run, the more kind of like, well, what if X is, what if he has X more in his, strengthen his min raising range? Or what if he's, et cetera, et cetera. And he sort of run these different models, you can kind of get better ideas of like how things evolve in terms of our thresholds against different play types. That was a very long answer, I'm sorry, Nick.
No, 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 this is fine, this is fine. You know, for the short form, we'll cut it up, it's all good. But I, on, on this point as well though, so you know, we're, we're talking about effectively, you know, adjusting for, for population. And you know, I would say that PokerStars has, has a pretty tough field generally at, at many stakes. So we can kind of assume there is a huge portion that are going to be regular players or you know, they have, they have some skills in the spins. But again, that doesn't predispose them to not having the tendencies that we're describing as well, right? Like we said, people tending to sort of push fold at A big blinds effective, blind v blind, that doesn't make them a bad player. That could be the right thing to do. That might be the best thing for their game because they don't want to have the headspace of having to figure out how to play A big blinds in a limp pod and all this stuff, right? So with the move to spin, some merge spinning goes, as we're calling them, you know, how much more should we be defaulting to GTO just because we don't have as much time to actually capitalize, right? Like there's sort of this feeling of, you know, I can, I can push this profitably. This is definitely gonna be like within Nash by, by a couple of big blinds. GTO would indicate when we, when we give it a couple of nodes that I should actually be limping here because it's gonna be slightly more effective. But I think probably if I don't take this spot, I'm gonna be in a lot more complicated situations post-flop. Or if anything, the length of this single hand might push us into the next blind level in the process of waiting. And so it's sort of like, you know, I feel like we are sort of defaulting more to, to more aggressive and potentially higher variance strategy in order to conquer that.
Yeah, it's a great question, Nick. I particularly like the fact that you're including the time it takes to play a hand. That's sort of like cutting-edge spin research I've been working on recently. And you're absolutely right, it's a really hard one to quantify where like, if we were to, for example, make an extra chip or two, but now suddenly by doing that, we have meant that the game now skips to blind levels. I, I talked about this a lot, I've worked on this a lot for like button limping, for example. I'm a big fan like button limping just because it's unusual, it's kind of creative and especially in reg environments. I think it's an area where you can kind of create an edge because it's incredibly understudied against and it's really difficult to figure out how to play optimally. But it has those downsides, as you mentioned, where like, yes, okay, I can maybe have a button strategy that picks up an extra two or three big blinds per hundred. But actually, it means that I'm playing six fewer hands a game or something. And then you're, I mean, that's an exaggeration, but then it's like, well, that's completely wasted, right? So you're absolutely right, that's definitely something you, you should take into account. What I would say, and I think it's important, is that in a funny sort of way, the, since the changes, every chip EV is now more important. So when you're a reg speed player and when you're a good reg speed player, as you were and are, Nick, you're making, I don't know, 40 chips or something, let's say, right? And so if you were to lose a chip or two or add a chip or two because you kind of simplify certain spots, it doesn't really matter, right? Like you have a, I don't know, a 4.8% ROI and then like, it goes to 4.6 and you're like, yeah, whatever, kind of thing, it's all fine. The problem with, or not the problem, but the important thing to recognize with these new format types is picking up an extra two chips is so significant in terms of improving your overall EV ROI. So it's not really possible to have 30 chips, 30, I mean, maybe at the, at certain stakes, but if you're playing, you know, 50s, hundreds, 250s plus, you're never gonna get anywhere like 20 plus chips in the new format. And the picking up an extra two chips is often the difference between making 0.4% ROI and like 1.2% ROI.
Yeah, no, I understand. It's because just the, the sort of, I mean, the number of chips in play is less immediately, right? So, so the amount that we win in relation to that is so much more significant because, you know, what are we averaging to like 370 chips or something like that with the new?
314, 32, something like that, yeah, 314, I think.
Even more pronounced, right? Even more pronounced than that. So yeah, no, definitely. I mean, so winning, basically winning three chips is like 1%, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It's a good way to look at it, absolutely. And I think with, with the, let's say, lower chip pool, the kind of more capped ROIs per game and that's, that is compensated because you could obviously play more games per hour. But nevertheless, I think I always take the approach that it's important not to leave chips out there. If there are chips out there, there are, especially there are certain win-wins, right? Where there are certain spots where you can both simplify your life and add extra chip EV to your game by not sort of, let's say, skipping spots which, if you were to play a kind of static GTO strategy, you are leaving chips out there. And it's a, if you're playing higher stakes and win rates are lower and you kind of want a mass table, you would like to be unexploitable, that is a valid approach and that has worked for a lot of people. I always encourage guys, especially guys who I think have more capabilities, and again, Nikki is one of them, that let's not, let's not leave chips out there, right? There, there are chips out there that we can grab and they will help your EV ROI. And they also do nice things like they reduce the downswings your face and they'll kind of, yeah, make the downswings less long and less severe. And like, I think also it's, it's more fun to play a game where you're winning more rather than sort of have to kind of just rely on like, well, I know this is great long-term, but it long-term can be very long-term sometimes, right?
Absolutely. I mean, and, and so, you know, just to try and extrapolate from our previous conversation as well, you know, is, is admitting more hands in this range, for example, a good example of that, right? Like, you know, so understanding that theoretically against a thousand opponents, you know, maybe, you know, maybe 10, 9 off or maybe king 9 off, for example, that was one you picked out. Maybe king 9 off is gonna be okay, but it's like right razor thin, like right on the edge of like what we really should be even considering against the correct range. Is this an example of just putting ourselves in less ugly situations and potentially just, you know, finding better faster?
It's a great example because like, it's exactly, also has the impact that you talked about where by folding king 9, we play more hands, right? I mean, that, we're not seeing a flop, even if it's just a flop and a check fold, that's often a hand, right, that we've played. But I would say, I would speculate that if you took, if you, if maybe a viewer watching, if they want to take their king 9 off and they've played, let's say, they have 500 spots where they've faced, been dealt with a hand like king 9 off or any of these martial hands at 10BB and they sort of like flatly just flatted them all because it's theory and I flat them all against population, I would say on average those will be losing flats. Now, it doesn't mean that every single one of them in, in individual are losing, but it's like, as an average, it's losing. And so if you wanted to play a static strategy, we should play a static strategy that is, fits our population the best. Now, the perfect thing is of course to have a bit, be, have a bit of fluidity. So sometimes flating king 9 and sometimes not. That's a really difficult thing to answer because, yeah, that involves a lot of thinking and I think often people are like, well, just tell me what to do. Do I flat king 9 or not? It's like, it depends. I'm so sorry. Like this is the answer to everything, it depends, but yeah.
If I can introduce you guys, but part, part of the reason why king 9 actually performs so well is again, if we look at the, if we look at the question and not the answer, there's, we're actually dominating a lot of these, a lot of these, these min raises, right? Like in a, in a big way, a lot of our bluffs are supposed to come from here. I mean, we're starting to border on what is potentially value, you know, king 9 suited kind of thing as well. But this is why that would perform so well. But as soon as these come out, it's just suddenly, it's suddenly the same hand a lot and then a bunch of hands that just have great playability in position and then losing hands. So this is a, this is a really good example. You know what I've, what I've just realized there, Tom, is? So this is a, this is a really good example. You know what I've, what I've just realized there, Tom, is in my mind, like I said to you just now, I've been saying this whole time, you know, if we simplify this as a push, you know, even if it's only winning, you know, like you know, half a big blind or something like that, that means we can get to hands faster. But folding has the same impact as well, you know, so if we're, if we're closing the action and we make a slightly tighter than GTO fold, that has the same impact, but without the variance. That's something that I've, that's just dawned on me in a very big way, that's cool.
Good. And you're absolutely right. And that, that's a great example because it's the win-win that we talk about, you know what I mean? So you're playing more hands per game with a higher win rate, it's like, well, it's fantastic, you know what I mean? Like what a great way to, to help on both fronts, yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome. Okay, cool. So did we, what, what did you?
Was that all the three handed? Yeah, we missed.
That was all the three handed, yeah, should we, should we hit heads up and then?
Yes, let's do heads up.
I'll tell you what we'll do, let's, let's hit heads up and let's have just a broad, a continued broad conversation there. And then let's, and then let's, let's, let's just do a couple of bullet points for Nick on specific ones that I can drill or something like that, maybe if, if that works for you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And then, and then I think we probably have enough content for maybe even a few reels, actually, actually, this has been a really nice conversation. So let's get across the heads up, let's take a look at these spots and then we will, we can do this one here first, there we go, let's do the GTO one.
Lovely. So we, it's funny, I very briefly looked at Nick's heads up small blind, I think it was about a month ago, Nick, wasn't it? And I remember I was talking, I think about min raising a little bit more at the deeper stacks. And your VP was, was pretty good, but then we also wanted to see the, the versus reg versus fish. Now I'm covered, it's covered by the faces, can we see the?
Let me, let me nudge over here. So verse reg versus fish, can you see the comparison there?
I see a verse reg, where's the verse?
Ah, okay, actually, I'm not, I don't know if I have that, I don't have that one in this.
Oh, don't worry, don't worry too much.
Breakdown. So I've got the verse reg, I mean, I don't know if we can extrapolate.
Oh, I guess we can just figure out from the difference, right?
Wait, one second, one second. So this is?
Maybe heads up small blind generally.
Heads up small blind, reg fish, here you go, this is the one we're looking at. Okay, cool. So is this it? So this is reg fish. Uh, where's the breakdown here? Okay, cool, here it is. Yeah, so this is verse reg, small blind. And then this is the, you click over here to get verse fish. Okay.
Okay, nice. Yeah, yeah. And I was also gonna hopefully look at the, the VPips as well, because I think one of the important things, very similar to the blind v blind.
Yeah.
When you're playing a recreational on the big blind, you should play it from a three handed perspective, you should play a super wide range. And realistically at 15 BB, like I would say you, it's better to almost play any two cards than to play a GTO range against, in terms of, like, that's not, that's, that's if you could only do one or the other against recreational read lists. Obviously, like your kind of aggregate data against recreationalists shouldn't be 99% VPip. But the same factors in terms of just massively over realizing your, your equity with each of your individual hands is going to apply in the heads up case. And so one of the things I often look for with a lot of the guys is like, just have a look and see how much are they deviating against their opponent? If it's a recreational or if it's a reg. And one of the things we noticed, maybe a month ago, Nick, was like you had fairly similar frequencies. Now, that doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but it may be that one of the things it could be is maybe you're very good at picking up on when a recreational is very aggressive, right? And so you notice like, oh, this guy's kind of crazy, he's been ice swing, he's been donking, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to be a bit careful about that guy. And maybe we want to put a similar amount of effort and attention into, oh, this guy's not really doing much, he's just check folding a lot, he's not ice swinging, et cetera. And then actually it's like, put all the hands into the VPip, like now, let's go, you know?
Right. I mean, so if we could draw any conclusions from here, we have the VPib versus reg and then versus, versus.
Overall, that's everyone.
I think, I think probably something else to note is, I mean, probably relatively what this, what this tracker is going to tell me is a reg is actually probably a lot to do with just number of hands played. I think that's how they're simplifying this. So I don't know if there's too much to glean from that, but it looks like probably it just being a tad tighter against reg, I guess, than, than, than against total population. But yeah, no, I, this is definitely the case. And I do think that, I remember when I was working with one of my like first sort of spinning go coaches, he was sort of saying, you know, we're supposed to fold like nine deuce off and like just that bottom little sliver there, you know, when we're 25 effective or whatever. But it, it was often the case that he said like, you can probably get away with a hundred percent against most players, about most people, you know? And I think that that's definitely a spot where we could probably sneak in some more hands and try and get a little bit more, squeeze out a little bit more, which as you said already, is such a big deal, you know, just winning an extra one chip or something per game on average is going to be huge.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so that's something that we definitely can, can look towards. In terms of, I mean, min raises are obviously another thing as well, like I think it would be very interesting, we can do this another day. But we can run through, maybe look at your win rates with, let's say, the kind of hands that you're min raised versus limping. This is less important in the, in the new format, of course, because like you play fewer hands, sixteen plus. But that, we do still play some hands and those hands will be typically in the big multiplier. So we want to make sure we're maximizing our win rates in those kind of, in those kind of games. And I would be very, very surprised and I, I will free roll Nick one dollar if he doesn't see the, the hands that he sometimes min raises, sometimes limps aren't massively outperforming as a min raise in terms of the win rates.
Yeah, I mean, you know what I've also come to realize as well, in this sort of journey back, the early stages of this exploration is I actually, I actually think that I probably do not play min raise pots particularly well. Like I, I think that that's definitely something that I, that I would like to drill. But it's one of those that I think rather than drilling, this is a spot where probably this is actually really hard because it's better to do kind of a flop aggregate report than it is to do a drill because otherwise you go, I think you're supposed to do, I don't know, I'm not sure, but you're not seeing the, 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 the points at which things change, right? So you're going, okay, cool. So we just bet big on this texture, that's easy. Oh, well, when your ten big blind's effective, that's not true anymore, or you know? So I think maybe a note for, a note for future is I should do some aggregate reporting on min raise pots and sizing, I think.
One, one of the things I would encourage you also to think is that you are right, like it is, it is, we are less studied, everyone is less studied if they play spins professionally in terms of min raise pots versus limp pots, but the same also applies for the big blinds too, right? So it, it is less comfortable being in a min raise spot. I think there isn't a spin reg out there that's like, oh yeah, I'm super comfortable like at 18 BB in min raise pots and I don't know what I'm doing in limp pots. Like that would be kind of weird because from a frequency point of view, we're, we're playing 10 cent min raises or something or more, but doesn't matter. But it also applies to our, our opponents. And, and actually what we typically see is population makes bigger mistakes in min raise pots than in limp pots, especially pre and post flop. And so you, yeah, again, I will be shocked if you weren't looking at your long-term numbers and just making more in your min raise pot.
No, I mean, and, and I, I completely trust you in saying that too. I, I think also I would be not shocked in the slightest if I saw the frequency of hands that I min raised being the most unbalanced muck you've ever seen. Like it's, I, there's definitely ones in my brain where I'm just like, yeah, we'll sneak this in as a min raise, but it's like a hundred percent frequency.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which doesn't help things, obviously, but yeah.
That'd be all right, that'd be right. Let's have a look at heads up big blind. I think that'll be fun. Obviously, we can go into lots of depth post, but like we'll keep it kind of macro focused, I think.
Let's, let's just go through all of it to begin with.
And so here we look for, again, the ice swing, we saw in the big blind versus small blind that we talked about, you know, people get more polar and it's useful in those situations if the population in particular is more polar than they should be. You can add more iso non-lean to your game. I think that would probably be a factor here at sort of seven to nine. We have a lowish non-lean iso and like, having some, some min isos there can be really effective, especially when you when you can find that opponent type that you suspect is going to be polar. Little kind of timing tip would be if you faced, let's say, someone that you're not sure about, but you suspect is reasonably competent. So not like a complete borderline recreational that has no clue, but someone who has a clue, but maybe isn't elite. And they snap limp at 8BB, it's very easy to assume that like, oh, that's, that's typically going to be a very polar range, right? Because they know to limp jacks, queens, kings, aces. They know to limp jack six off or something. They may not know whether they're supposed to limp, you know, ace king off there. They may have a little thought and they go, mm, okay, whatever.
Yeah.
So typically you're up against a much more polar range, but because it's polar and because there's so much more air available, those are great spots to actually just attack with a lot of min isos. Now, we should again add the caveat, like assuming this guy hasn't got like a 50% VPip. If he's like playing, you know, if he's only played five out of 10 hands and he snapped limbs, then I'm not even like, but, but in particular, those are really good ones to stay away from your bluff isos, right? It's really tempting to just like, well, just parlaying queen two because like it's, plus you have something. Like if you look at the EVs, it's going to be close checking and, and iso jamming. In general, long term, you're going to make more money isering those hands against population, but there will be specific points where you don't want to take those as iso jams. And actually those can be useful hands to use as almost like, well, this guy's kind of super polar here and why don't I iso jam? Because like, I could just min iso and get pretty much the same amount of folds. And most of the population has too little a gap between their response, their fold versus non-lean and their fold versus all ins at the shallow stacks, which makes sense, right? Because they're more polar. So that would be something that, yeah, go on.
No, so I was just going to say, so you know, like, let's say, let's say that we are going to sneak more of that in. Something that, something that I see players that I think are actually very good do quite a lot, which I've always kind of struggled with sort of as a, from a theoretical standpoint is I see them iso and then they actually have a lot of sort of check give ups, especially at the sort of lower stack depth. Now, in my brain, I've simplified that or I've, I've, I've answered my question by going, well, this guy definitely knows what he's doing. I think what he's doing is he's trying to find an exploit as a, as a pre-flop move and then he's not getting like bogged down with, okay, now I have to find a way to win this pot, right? If he hasn't connected and there's no equity, I mean, how much of that from a theory standpoint are we meant to be doing at that stack depth? Because kind of presumably or like intuitively, I would say that if we were playing the correct range, we should have a, a, a move on the flop most of the time, like a continuation bet most of the time.
So it, it depends.
It depends on stack depth, obviously, but.
And, and, and the board as well is, is a big difference. And so like, I would also, I, I'm very encouraging of guys like being quick to give up post flop, right? So like you've already typically, especially when you're playing a polar range, you've typically already made your money by taking a 2.2X iso, let's say, for example. Like you're going to generate against population more than the required kind of fold from a minimum, minimum defense frequency. And then on the flops, let's say the board comes sort of like queen 10 eight or something. And you're there with, with like, whatever you've iso'd, I don't know, six four off or something. It's really tempting to think like, well, I'll just see bet and see what happens. But like, it's just a terrible c-betting spot, right? You really shouldn't c-bet there against population, like the, their available hands to fold and that kind of board are just like, just gone in terms of like, they're, they're over folding pre, their limp ranges are too polar and like you, you're just screwed trying to like bet there. Now you can go for like a bet, bet, bet or something, but like, it's, it's really good just to, on the right board, just be like, I'm done, okay, see you later, kind of thing.
Yeah. And I, I think something, something that I've tried to, tried to instill in myself or to try and, try and confidently sort of affirm in my brain is that the spots where, the spots where I can effectively bluff come to me so fluidly. And I go, this is the clearest bluff, bluff, bluffs, you know, bet, bet, bet spot ever, you know, this is absolutely premium. And the number of times where I confidently do something in poker these days that, that's not just a slam dunk compared to the number of times where I go, well, I, I think I could like, I, I suppose we probably should be doing a, a, a whatever. And then it's just, I get to the river and I'm so angry with myself because it's like, you knew that was trash. But you tried to find a way to convince yourself because you studied the spot that this is supposed to work.
I think, I think on top of that and, and probably there's, I can advise strong with this as well, like when you're, when you're playing on stream, it is a lit, there's a little bit more where you're like, I, I, I'm a little bit more hesitant to go completely out of the box in terms of like what I should be doing. Because if you go completely out of the box and you're wrong, it's like, well, look at this idiot, you know what I mean? And where, where like if it's theoretically correct and you kind of know like, I'm going to get called here, but it, this is a peak bluff and like, I'm just going to take it and like, oh, they called, well, I know it was fine. And you're not going to get the kind of critique so much from the audience, but yeah.
Actually, very often on stream as well, I'll say something along the lines of, you know, I'm going to be really brave here and fold. And people are like, what do you mean be brave and fold? I'm like, because the nerd inside me is screaming at me, there is no chance, you can't defend this hand, there's no chance you can't get away from this turn. Like, oh, if you're folding jack high on this turn, you're getting exploited, you know, blah, blah, blah. And it's just like, you have to be brave sometimes to actually just go, computer says yes, but I'm going to say no, you know what I mean?
Massive, massive pat on the back from me for doing that, Nick, because that's really good. And I think that's hard for, let's say, the average viewer to recognize how tough that can be, but really well done for having that voice. And I would encourage you to keep, keep listening to that.
Keep listening to that voice.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, and so we talked about, so I think one thing we can also talk about would be check raising, for example, would be a good one in terms of heads up big blind, making sure that we're check raising enough on the right kind of boards as well. Again, similar to like the pre-flop, like if people are quite polar and then they c-bet often, they still are quite polar in a lot of spots. And so there are certain board types to kind of attack more. It's interesting when we talked to, you talked about the iso, maybe your c-betting, I see the c-bet's 86 kind of thing. And that's, yeah, of the high, I mean, from a theory point of view, that's, that's pretty good, right? But from a kind of in-game optional numbers point of view, I typically would encourage guys to like, against population at least, have a bit of a lower c-bet in the iso pot. One of the things that works really well is actually just delaying works a lot because when you look at the theories and let's take our queen eight, 10 eight board, right? Again, that we've iso'd. If you check that with six four off and population checks back, they're supposed to be checking back a bunch of two pairs, a bunch of queen x, a bunch of straights, a bunch of slow plays. And actually on that board, like most of the population is just so happy that they've flopped up pair that they're like, oh yeah, cool, like I want to go and bet it kind of thing. And so typically when you, what they're often also not doing is then they're also not bluffing that spot enough, right? So they've defended with six five suited against your six four off, the board's come queen 10 eight and you've checked and they're like, well, I'm not going to triple barrel. Like most populations just goes like, I give up as well. So often delaying can be a really effective line to actually take some of your c-bets, especially some of the bluff c-bets on the bad boards and just put them into a delay line. And like, have a bit of a higher check fold, but just like delay more against population read lists.
I, I, I think that's a huge one as well. I think the, the other, the other spot that I find a lot of people are, are potentially making mistakes on are especially coming from just MTT background or something like that, I think their desire to check raise on boards where like they kind of go, my opponent's not really going to have too much of this, but not understanding how hard it is for them to like c-bet the flop and then not, and then continue when they have absolutely nothing, right? So there's a lot of spots where I think their, their energy is, well, I'm pretty sure that he's not going to hit this board too often, so I'm going to check raise. But you're like, the float is so much better because when they give up, they're just done with the hand. And you're not having to add that additional variance to the, to the line. And then also even, even better is then you can sneak in some calls when you have, you know, very strong things there too. But that's definitely another good example of where I think, I'm trying to find a lot more delay everything basically. And I think actually it's incredible how, how easy it is when you arrive on the turn to go. It's so hard for him to have a hand here, it's so hard for them to actually play a hand this way that makes any sense. So now we, we know where we're at, for sure.
Yeah, 100%. And, and it's tough as well because like, I know I'm really imbalanced, unbalanced with a lot of those lines where I'm like, wow, I'm just always bluffing here. But it, it's only important if the pop, if the person you're playing knows, right? If they don't know, that's a really good thing to be imbalanced, like unbalanced, like if they're getting loads of folds, I should be bluffing here loads. And so it can also, I also sometimes feel almost guilty about like, it's so easy just to delay and it's like, just do it, you know what I mean? Just come on, like it's good, you're winning, like just do it. And they're like, it's also difficult, they don't know that I've been doing this for 10 years, just.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's the same energy as well when you do. It's, it's the same energy where you go, all right, cool, I'm going to call, oh, that's such a good turn for them to bluff. And then you really start to level yourself into like, well, you know, this, he's always going to barrel this card, so there's no chance I can slay. But then you have to remember who you're playing against, remind yourself, you know, if this is the kind of player that does have the turn barrel bluffs on every high card or whatever it is, and take it from there. But yeah, I'm with you on that 100%. So, okay, if we could.
Couple of bullet points then?
Yeah, if, if, if we could, if, let me open a little, a little notepad here.
Yeah.
And let's, and let's just, let's just jot down a couple of spots for Nick to practice, shall we?
Yeah.
Did you have any notes going already or do you want to go through?
No, 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 you, you can, you can write them, it's absolutely fine, yeah.
Yep.
So I would say from a pre-flop perspective, things I, we, did we talk about attacking versus defending last time? Did I, have I said that to you?
I'm not sure. Oh, no, sorry, no, absolutely, yeah. So you, you explained some people are better at attacking, some people are not so good at defending, and I was in the latter category, yes.
Yeah, yes, exactly. And so I think that's probably would be something that we can work on some of your defending, if you like, in spins. And that would be something to look for. In terms of the, the study, I think things that would be quite easy, low hanging fruit for you would be to look at the big blind versus button min raises at sort of that 10, 11, 12. I think it makes sense at the very minimum to make sure you're not going wider than theory, right? I mean, most people are wider than the theory there and they should be tight in theory. So like, let's get you to, to theoretical levels at least, like it's an easy kind of, whichever way you want to look at that. I would say, let's also, I think it could be c-betting spots in, in heads up big blind, iso pot, sorry. So like c-betting in iso spots would be a fun one to look at. We can do that from a, from a theory point of view, that wouldn't be a bad thing. I think it would be good for you, or good for viewers as well, maybe to see like, you do give up actually quite a bit with like no equity. Like you typically are not just taking that, so that's absolutely fine. That would be something.
Cool.
From, from a non-theory perspective study, I would encourage maybe some of the blind v blind, just getting used to playing some wider stuff. So make it a habit if you can against recreationalists to like not fold jack four off, 15 BB, blind v blind, right?
And presumably we're just going to sneak in it as a limp basically, because.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, absolutely. Just, just limp. And then even there, it's another case of like, if you're not sure what to do, just delay. That's very simple and I'm not really, I don't like to give simple answers, that is a simple answer I will give. If you're not sure and it's a recreational, limp your hand and delay it. And like, that's really good if you don't know what you're doing. But obviously I, I think you will be able to capitalize more using your fantastic poker knowledge and kind of assessment of situations. And you can kind of create some plans, right? So you can maybe look for to triple barrel in certain spots or to bet, check, bet, or delay and barrel, or delay and give up, or even super delay, or whatever you need to do. Like it will depend on opponents and spots and stuff like that. Then a heads up from blind min raising a little bit would be a, not a bad idea to, to maybe look at your win rates and look and see what is your win rate min raising versus what is your win rate limping? And then also if you can, it depends on the sample, you can use your old sample as well. So like you can go and look at your reg speed sample, for example, and look at 15 to 20 or 15 to 25, just do 15 plus actually as, as maybe your stack devs. And grab a bunch of hands in the middle somewhere, right? So we're not going to skew it by picking top or bottom or picking middle bunch of hands that you'll see in theory are all kind of like mixed anyway at 25 BB. And just look at your winner and see like, okay, if I've got jack seven off and I'm in raise versus I limp at 20 as, and a bunch of hands around that, I'd be shocked if you haven't got higher win rates min raising.
Yeah.
And I think that will be a good starting point. There's lots more we can go into, but maybe we can save those for a future. Yeah.
There's always more. There's always more. So yeah, if you guys are watching this at home, this is, this has been, this has been a, almost an hour of, of actual chat that will be condensed into something smaller. But no, this is a fantastic place to start. And you know, honestly, just hearing you say it out loud, there's so much of this that resonates with me as, you know, I, there's, these are definitely spots that I've been telling myself I'm going to go and look at more, but just don't because it's kind of been working, right? Which is, which is such a bad excuse, but that's kind of, that's kind of what we're going to do here. And in a game of much smaller edges now, I think I need everything I can get. So this is, this is brilliant. All right. So I guess that's a wrap. Thank you so much. Texas Tomo, thank for your time today, buddy. Do you want to give the team a shout out? Do you want to give any shout outs to, to the squad, to, to any of the organizations that you work for?
Team 61 Poker, we twitch spins similar to Nikki. I think the second best spin and go Twitch stream after Nick. And so, yeah, yeah, Team 61 Poker, I think is our Twitch channel. And Lucy Poker, I'm also doing work for Lucy Poker, which is a poker solver. And so I'll give them a shout out as well. It's, they're working quite hard. They've got some good stuff coming, lots of spin content as well. So Lucy Poker and Team 61, they're my two plugs. Thank you, Nick.
Keep an eye out for that. Thank you again, mate. Really appreciate it. And, and we'll, and we'll, we'll keep you guys posted. Then we'll, we'll definitely do this in the future. Thanks, guys.